Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Good evening and welcome back, everybody. We are about to move into the second half of our annual meeting. This time we're going to be the annual town meeting for the town of Rockingham. And I'm going to still go through the, some of the notes and the announcements I made before the school meeting for those who have joined us later. I'll keep it a little bit shorter. And then we'll move on into the articles. Again, my name is Ray Masuko. For those of you who don't know me, you're lucky. I inherited this job from my good friend, Michael Hardy, five years ago. It gets easier over time. But we'll see if we can get you through this evening because this is again, a little bit different than what we're used to. For those of you who are on Zoom, keep in mind that you can participate in the discussion. But on the two articles that will allow people to make motions, you will not be able to vote. But you can participate otherwise. We ask you to sign into the chat so we know that you are here. Just remind folks, the exits, emergency exits to my left out through the kitchen. Out here in the hallway to your left as you go out the door. Exit to the left takes you up to the alleyway. The set of stairs to my right behind me takes you up to landing. There are two sets of stairs, two exits that go out into the alley next to People's Bank. Hopefully, we won't have to use either of those before the meeting is over. If you've got cell phones, pagers, or anything else that beeps, buzzes, makes any kind of noise, put them on airplane mode or turn them off. Probably not going to be using them much during the meeting. The, if you have your town report with you, I would ask you to turn to the dedication page. And I'm going to call on the vice chair of the select board, Susan Hammond, to read the dedication to her friend and neighbor, Dennis Jeffrey.
Thank you. The town report this year is dedicated to Dennis Jeffrey. Dennis Jeffrey was a founding member of the Rockingham Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., when it began on August 16, 1970. He helped to develop the department's bylaws and policies that have led its members form the start and continue to guide its members today. Dennis was an active member of the Rockingham Fire Department for 50 years. Forty-two of those, he led the department as chief. As a member, he dedicated tens of thousands of hours volunteering his time to serve our community. The department is thankful for Dennis and his many years of leadership that have supported its members to be knowledgeable, capable, and dedicated, including those who lead the department today. Members of the Rockingham Fire Department, past and present, thank Dennis for his commitment to serving our community and ask that the town of Rockingham share in this gratitude for his decades of service. Thank you very much, Dennis.
Considering that Dennis is only 65 now, that means he joined the department when he was 13. Yeah, all you old people are laughing. A few other matters of protocol and conduct. If you're here and you want to speak, we have two microphones. One here is a traveling mic that my sergeant-at-arms cast right will bring to you to use. Make sure it's turned on. The other mic is disappeared. Okay, we have another mic on that side of the room. We'll have to borrow, we'll have to borrow when anybody here wants to speak. Please use the mic. I know you all think you have loud booming voices. You don't. And the people on Zoom can't hear you if you don't use the microphone. So please be sure to utilize that. Folks at home, if you're, when you do speak, make sure you unmute yourself. We can, we can't read lips. We don't want to see you flapping your gums and not knowing what you're saying. So we have to be sure that you're unmuted, unmuted. Rules of order. We use Robert's rules, as I've said before. We can't change Robert rules, but we can't change state law, but we can modify Robert's rules if necessary. We don't have a lot of articles that involve a great deal of voting tonight. As we mentioned before, Article 2 and Article 14 in this case. One has to do with the reports of the officers. The other has to do with other business not expending funds. The other articles will be motioned, seconded, and brought up for discussion. I will give the maker of the motion the first shot at promoting or explaining or discussing their motion. Then we'll open it up to other board members, and then we'll open it up to the public. We can cut off debate, if you will, it's more discussion than debate at a meeting like this. But you can call the vote, and I will decide on those two cases if we're going to do that. If the, we can have as much discussion on these as we need. And I emphasize need. You'll each get a second chance to speak if you wish. Limit your total time to 10 minutes. I'm not clocking you, but 10 minutes is a long time. We can pretty much tell if somebody's gone that long. The, keep your remarks directed to the motion on the floor at that time. Try not to stray too far off course. If you do, I'll rein you back in. I don't expect we will, but you know, don't go off on a tangent any more than absolutely necessary. Non-residents can be allowed to speak. I'm going to, we have very few, most of the town officials are residents, so that's not an issue. For town officials who I need to call on for explanations or who want to contribute, I'm going to make a decision now that they can speak. If anybody has an objection to an out of town, should I put it the other way? Out of town residents can speak with a vote of two-thirds of the assembly. And again, we rarely have an objection. We rarely have, rarely have people from out of town who need to speak. There are some articles on some of the nonprofit charitables. They may be here tonight. They may wish to speak on behalf of their organizations. And I'm going to allow them, whether they're residents or not, unless I hear an objection. And as all the moderators before me have said, we, we're all residents here. We're all friends. We need to be civil. We need to be polite. We need to not speak over each other. Address your questions to me. I'll either answer it or redirect it to somebody who can answer it. Civility, politeness. We're neighbors. We came in as friends. We're going to go home as friends. And with that, we will call the meeting to order. I'd like to introduce to you the board sitting up here. And from my left, Elijah Zimmer, Susan Hammond, Peter Golick, Chair, Rick Cowan, and Bonnie North. So we will kick it off with some motions. Keeping in mind that tomorrow's voting will be at the Masonic Temple. The hall will open at eight o'clock for voting. It will stay open until seven o'clock. You have to be inside the building by seven in order to vote. If you're standing out on the sidewalk chatting up a candidate and you walk up at 7:01, you've lost your opportunity. So anytime between eight and seven, get down to the Masonic Temple, exercise your right to vote, and we'll see you tomorrow. With that, Article, yeah, we already did the school. Let's do the town this time. Article one, to elect town officers and town school district officers as required by law. That's by Australian ballot. That is tomorrow. That does not require a motion. Article two, to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year. And Chairman Golick, I understand you're going to make that motion.
Yes, I will. I move to, or to have the voters receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you. Peter, do you wish to offer anything up about the reports?
They are in the report. Maybe one of the things in the report that is probably readable, legible. We do apologize for the appearance of this report. If anybody's had a chance to look at it, there's columns are not aligned properly. And there's some numbers that are not correct. They have a sheet of corrections here if anybody is interested in them. The bonus to that is that all the articles asking for money tonight, the main budget article and Article seven, Article eight, the money they're asking for is correct. There are some items that the breakdown in the actual budget items are maybe incorrect. And I can correct those if we get to them, if anybody has any questions. They're not large, they're just minor mistakes. And we don't know whether it was done at the printers or whether it was sent up incorrectly. So we're trying to sort that out. And there is the manager's report. I don't know if he has anything to expound on, but they're in there. They're pretty short reports.
Mr. Pickup, do you wish to expand on the report that's printed in the annual town report?
I think the only thing that I'll add is some of the impacts on our budget this year were items that obviously we didn't anticipate. We're still waiting on large amounts of federal aid from the July storms. So that impacted some of our, our spending through the year. But we're hopeful, meeting with FEMA, that we'll be able to get all of our monies reimbursed as well as hopefully a couple of mitigation projects which might help us as we go forward to eliminate some of these problems as we're experiencing more and more storm-related and damaging storms. So those are the things that, you know, we hope don't happen as we go forward with this budget. And it certainly impacted last year's budget, along with COVID impacting some of our operations. In some cases, it was actually a benefit. We were able to tap into some federal monies and help our financial position. In other instances, it hurt some of our other activities, like our opera house attendance and some other places where we couldn't have full and robust attendance. So I think overall, it was a challenging year, but a good year. I think we're set up for hopefully this budget reflecting opportunities to do some things as we go forward. There's quite a few articles in here that deal with items that I think are investing back in the community. And we're hoping that we'll see positive momentum as we go forward.
Thank you, Scott. Is there any other discussion on Article two? Mr. Hardy? Well, we'll lend you one.
Explanation of that, but I still, I brought it up last year.
Now you've got to use it, Mike.
Oh, I thought you could hear me. I just, I don't see any actuals in the report. I brought that up again last year. I don't know how you can make a budget without knowing how much you spent last year or the year before, so we can see a trend in it. So I just asked that next year, we have the actuals in here.
That we, we received the audit probably last week. Scott can correct me if I'm wrong. The report had already been printed. But if you look at that audit report, page 69, 70, 71, will give you the numbers you're looking for. That's it. The numbers are in there for 2021. We did ask, the board asked to have a handout of 2022 expenses and budget numbers. It's the one we always look at every week at our budget. But you have to remember, if you look at that, you're only going to get the numbers through February. So there's another four months of income and expenses. So it's really not a proper form of putting into the report. So that's why the hours go back a year prior. You always have the budget for 2021 and the expenditures for that period. As I said earlier, you can get that from the audit report on those three pages. It's listed there, tells you the budget, and it will give you the expenditures for each one. So you can see where we spent under or over. But next year, hopefully, if the audit comes through early enough, hopefully it will be. We're going to try and get them to get down here with the COVID situation. And there must have been something in the water because between the school and the town, the finances were messed up. And we are trying to correct all those errors before any of the reports got put in. So people would be looking at accurate numbers, not a guesstimate. So going forward, we will endeavor to get them in there.
Thank you, Peter. Any other discussion or comments on the officer's reports? Mr. Lambert?
I'd just like to point out on page, page two, BFUHS number 27, school directors. Only two directors are listed there. There are actually five directors from Rockingham. The other three are Jason Terry, Margot Gia, and Priscilla Lambert.
Any further discussion on Article one? Scott, anybody on Zoom has their hand up? No. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the motion. Article one has been moved and seconded, I'm sorry, Article two has been moved and seconded to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year. All in favor of accepting the reports say aye. All in favor of, I'm sorry, all opposed to accepting the reports say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and the motion has carried. Article three, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize the select board and treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payment of money due to the town from the state of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds? This is a housekeeping motion, and I understand that Sue Hammond is going to make that motion.
I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize the select board and the treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payment of money due to the town from state, from the state of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Peter. Is there discussion under Article three? Hearing none, we will put it to a vote. Article three, it has been moved and seconded to have the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize the select board and treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payment of money due to the town from the state of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article three has passed. Article four.
Right, point of order. I thought that was an Australian ballot vote tomorrow. I thought we were only pulling on Article two and Article.
You're right, Paul, I apologize. So I am going to declare that, that vote void, vote void, because that is on the ballot. I've got two different sheets I'm looking at, the warning and the ballot, but you're absolutely right. That will be voted on by Australian ballot tomorrow at the Masonic Temple between eight and seven.
Thing we will endeavor to put by Australian ballot, as the school did, so that you won't have that confusion next year.
Yeah, but I should know better. I know that's what we're doing. All right, so keep in mind that Articles four through 13 are literally for discussion only until we get to the other business article. Don't let me call for a vote again. Catch me before I do that. Article four, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize the select board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate ways after required public input? And Ms. North, I believe that's your motion.
I would like to move that the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize the select board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate ways after required public input. To be voted on by Australian ballot.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you, Rick. All right, this is our discussion. And Bonnie, do you wish to address Article four before we put it to the rest of the assembly?
I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to discuss Article four? If not, we will not take a vote, and we will vote on that tomorrow by Australian ballot. Article five, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize cannabis retailers in town pursuant to Title VII Vermont statutes annotated, Section 863? And Mr. Cowan, I believe you've been chosen to make that motion.
Okay, this will be voted on tomorrow. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham authorize cannabis retailers in town pursuant to Vermont 7 VSA, Section 863?
Can I get a second? Thank you. Rick, is your motion? Do you wish to address it before we open it up?
Sure, I've got a couple of quick facts here that will take about maybe two minutes. So we're one of 40 towns in Vermont that will be voting on this tomorrow. Act 164 was passed by the Vermont State Legislature in 2020. It creates a cannabis control board, which is, its purpose is to regulate and license the adult use of cannabis for the cannabis industry in Vermont. Adults 21 and older may possess up to one ounce at a time. Dispensaries may open adult-use retail locations, begin to sell cannabis and cannabis-related products as of this coming May. Adults 21 and older will be able to buy up to one ounce of cannabis flower or one ounce of the equivalent in cannabis-related products at a time. The 6% sales tax and the 14% excise tax revenue all go to the state. There's some hope that this will be changed with the act that's, you know, bill that's before the legislature, sponsored by Janet White, which seeks to have a fair distribution between state and local of the, of the tax revenue. As it stands now, 30% of these taxes are earmarked for funding universal after-school programs and youth prevention programs. So that money goes to state, comes back to us for such programs. There will be no public consumption or lounges. Vermont has a first-in-the-nation 30% THC cap on flowers and a 6% THC cap on concentrates. And it's a retail opt-in. So that means that we, the citizens, decide if we want this to happen. And the, there's a buffer zone for 500 feet from school. So no retail establishment can be located closer than 500 feet to a school. And that's it. I guess we can open it up for discussion, Ray.
Is there discussion under Article five? Yes.
So Amy Howlett from Saxon's River, just a brief comment that it's been great to have so much discussion, so many opportunities to read about here and see the ramifications in the, in the public before we come to the vote. So I, just a voice of appreciation for the select board, for Greater Falls Connections, for the groups that made that possible.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Are there any other members of the assembly? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Bill Morse. I have two questions as to this proposal. First, what kind of promotion will be allowed should a business establish itself in our town? I know we don't have billboards, thank God, because otherwise we'd look like Massachusetts going south on 91, where cannabis is promoted. So no billboards, but what kind of promotion will there be for any such establishment in our town? Visual, I mean.
So the cannabis control board, which is authorized by Act 164, will be making most of the rules around promotion. And the outward-facing advertising, so there shouldn't, the, the stores can't have sandwich boards or other signs that as you walk by, you see them. You can look into the store, but there's nothing that as you walk by, you will see. That's called outward-facing advertising. And maybe one of our colleagues from Greater Falls Connections can help us with that. Laura, do you recall any more details on that?
Hi, I'm Laura Sherbaum. I'm the director of Greater Falls Connections. I know most of you, you know, most of you know me, appreciate the community support in building a better environment for all our kids in our community. So the regulations around advertising is, hold on, let me make sure I have the right information in front of me. That you're correct, that Vermont doesn't allow billboards. That prohibits advertising that appeals to kids. No one under 21 will be allowed in stores, and there'll be no outward-facing advertising. There'll be warning labels on packaging, and the advertising prohibits any health or therapeutic claims. So what it looks like is that there's not going to be a lot of advertising available to kids in the community. But who knows what a retail in a downtown might say around kids being exposed to either the products or the passive sort of existence of a retailer in our community. So I'd encourage that the community that we all think about, if this goes through, that we establish a cannabis control commission so that we can look at zoning, maybe create buffer zones that are more expansive from schools or playgrounds, and really ensure that we're, if this goes through, implementing it in a smart way that protects our kids.
Thank you, Laura. Bill has a second question.
See, my concern as a parent and a former school teacher is the message we're sending to children. Especially if you see a building with visual appeals for whatever product they're selling. Picture of cannabis. I mean, this is 2021. Most children can recognize the plant. But it's another thing when it's sold in a store in our community. If the store looks like a doctor's office with the lack of visuals and just what it is, I think I can live with that. But anything, pictures, comments, gimmicks, I think sends a very negative message, confusing message to our children. The other point I want to bring up, 30% cap on the, 30% cap on the THC level. Now someone, Laura, perhaps someone explained to me why I've heard that a 15% cap is more reasonable if you want to avoid long-term damage to a person's brain or their, let's say bodily functions from consistent daily use. Now THC, I'm thinking nicotine levels for addiction and cigarettes. We've been lied to about that by the seven major tobacco companies. I'm very distrustful of another industry that can doctor products and raise the addiction level of what they're selling. So if I'm wrong, I'd love to find out tonight, because right now I'm not in favor of this measure. Again, as a parent and as a neighbor. It's, it's a gamble. And if somebody, if the, if the, if the people in Springfield or Brattleboro or Putney want to have opened a business or allow a business to locate within their limits, then that's their business. But this is our business. This is going to have an effect on our children. It's, I know, it's like allowing a casino to come into your town, too. They're, they're kind of hard decisions. But my main concern here, other than the promotion, is the level of THC and what that effect that has. Daily consumption of 30% THC into your system, what that does to a brain, especially someone who's a younger person. And if somebody could address that, because that's a big question mark in my mind. Where is the level of THC going to change someone's bodily functions? Thinking their brain. Thank you.
Does anybody wish to respond? Yes, Paul, please.
I just did a show here at one o'clock in the afternoon on Facebook about my knowledge marijuana. I smoked one half of a joint at a party when I was in high school, my senior year. It did nothing for me. I drove oil truck for three years, never smoked pot. Drove school bus for Rockingham West Minister School District, never smoked pot. Worked at the high school 18 years, never smoked pot. I've lived in this community my whole life. Marijuana has been here from 1980, under the table. You can get it at 54 houses within this village. I agree 100% with the Greater Falls Coalition. We have to keep it away from anyone that's under 21. But I'll tell you right now, But I'll tell you right now, a one-mile buffer zone, I strongly disagree with that because it ruins the economy. You can walk by any local bar and see what type of beer they're advertising. And I almost died at 15 of alcohol poisoning, and my eyes flipped up over my head and I foamed it in my mouth. I started smoking pot a year ago. I grew an eight-foot, three-inch plant. It was the best thing I ever did in my life for post-traumatic stress disorder, learning disabilities, to comprehend what I read, to be calm at this meeting. To me, to have pharmacies prescribing drugs every day when marijuana can truly help people. What I'm trying to say is, also, if the state of Vermont taxes so high, it's going to go back under the table, and believe it or not, you ain't gonna like this. When you talk about school districts and teachers, I have seen teachers smoke pot. I have seen administrators smoke pot, and even law enforcement smoke pot and take it from people off the street and send it right back out on the street. So that's reality.
Oh, one last thing I want to say.
Would disagree with is edibles. Edibles will mess you up. I ate one whole chocolate chip cookie one time, and I'll tell you what, it messed me up. I'm telling the kids the truth. I crawled on the floor. I was confused for eight hours. So I agree with the THC level. It messes you up, that you have to have that regulated so the kids don't get it in a candy form. Thank you.
Any other discussion under?
Mr. Moderator, we do have one person on Zoom that would like to speak to this.
One person on Zoom?
Yes.
Can you identify him for me?
Yes, it's Rena's iPad.
Hello?
You're on.
Hi, I would like to point out that I am a parent of children at Central Elementary. I have seen on numerous occasions young kids selling pot over at the playground. I don't condone pot or usage of any way, shape, or form, but I would rather see my kids, not my personal kids, but the kids that are smoking pot, get clean pot. Not something some dealer has come up with and laced with whatever the hell they, excuse my language, whatever they have decided to lace into it. I know the medicinal uses for pot. It helps depression. It helps chemo and radiation treatment, them being able to eat, them not being in pain, getting rid of nausea. I don't think it's a bad thing to think about putting it in the town.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak on the article?
Jonathan Wright from Bellas Falls. I would just like to state that currently we're in an island. Marijuana is legal in Massachusetts. It's legal in Canada. It's becoming legal in New Hampshire. It is legal in Maine. It will be legal, or it's decriminalized in New York. And as we go into a new era, that island is getting smaller. It's now legal in Vermont. Communities around us will all be voting on this issue. Our children do not live on an island. They live in a global network. They see this on social media. They see this in their real world. They travel. From the children now that are in elementary school and middle school that are being exposed to this are nothing like what it was when we were growing up. I would like to think that I'm not old, but at 46, I know I am. I see the differences that are out there. As this island restricts, do we want to stay on the island, or do we want to join the community around us? We can restrict it as much as we want. It's a choice that our community is going to make at the polls tomorrow. And if not tomorrow, it'll probably be in another year or two years when this is re-debated. But I would like to voice my support for this. I would like to voice my support for a path forward that is sustainable, that treats our community with respect, that involves our youth in teaching them about the negative effects that can come with this, just like the negative effects of alcohol or the negative effects of smoking. There's so much out there in this world that we have to be afraid of. I think that we can take a step forward in light and make a responsible decision about the use and sale of marijuana in our community that isn't going to be made around emotion and the what-ifs that can be made around educated facts. I would like to see us move forward in a path that had some fiscal benefit to our community, whether it be through taxes that are going to affect our schools or our local programs or social services, or whether we're going to see a financial benefit through a local retail tax. But the first step is really thinking about this, thinking about what we want as a community, and coming out tomorrow and voting. Thank you very much.
Unmute, Gordon.
I am unmuted.
Yeah, go.
Hello?
Who's trying to speak?
I'm trying to speak.
Oh, okay, you're up, Gordon.
Does the state stipulate what the shop, for example, what the shop is, the externals of the shop and where it is to be located? And for example, and how it's supposed to be monitored? I mean, I, last summer, I went to a shop in Hadley, and there were, it was a separate, it was separate from any other shop. You had to come there almost in a car. I mean, you couldn't get there without a car or a bus. And as you pulled in, there was someone there who would, he would examine your driver's license and your ID even before you were able to get in, ostensibly supposedly helping you park and things like that. But the question is, does the state stipulate any of the specifics about how to set the shop up?
Rick or Laura, can you answer that question?
My understanding is that local zoning cannot be more restrictive for cannabis dispensaries than it is beyond the 500-foot buffer zone. You can't pass laws particularly aimed at how the retail operation works. Laura, does that match with what you know? Okay.
So Gordon, I guess the answer is we don't have any hard and fast rules at this point.
One more thing, Ray. The Cannabis Control Board will function pretty much like the Liquor Control Board does now. In that they will send underage people in to try and see if pot is sold to them and so on. So there'll be an enforcement mechanism that comes from the state, and if licensees break any of those rules, they lose their license.
So it's up to the town of Bellas Falls, basically, to set up, to decide where this shop should be, what location, whether there should be something built or whether it should be an existing structure? That's right?
I don't think we can control that, Gordon, but beyond the 1,000-foot or 500-foot, there is some debate whether there'll be a 500-foot or 1,000-foot buffer. The CCB is still working out the details on that.
Okay.
And Laura?
Thank you, Gordon. Betsy?
Right, Laura.
All right, Laura, we'll give you another chance to have explanation, then we'll get to that.
I want to be clear and confirm what Rick said, that any local zoning or ordinances would apply to any type of business within the community. And there, you know, there's a possibility that the town could create other zoning or have it in an industrial area versus zoned in a commercial area. But that would be something that the Cannabis Control Commission could make recommendations about. But it's not, it's not automatic that the towns would specifically be able to limit or create more buffer zones related to a retail business, if that helps.
Hi, Betsy Thurston. I would just like to comment on a couple of things that I heard. One thing, I've spoken to people actually that are interested in opening businesses, and I think they're not looking at inside the village, which I think is unfortunate. So they are looking at places like in Massachusetts. I actually just went to one because I really wanted to see what this was all about. I was not schooled on this. And it kind of looked like an old armor here, something like. I was picturing military trucks parked outside. It was this nondescript, very plain building. Didn't attract. If you were driving by, you would have had no idea what the building was. Even just to get inside, you had to show your ID. It was an unmarked lobby. And so I think for the outside or the advertising, you know, the outside advertising, I can see where that will definitely not attract people. The 30% cap, right, I heard on, that actually, I think, is per serving. So when you buy something, it's a 30%, but it's an individual piece. And each, there's a dosage suggestion, and it's five milligrams. I will mention that I know people that use edibles that never smoked in their life, and they feel very safe. It's for sleeping. It's for pain. You know, friends, parents that definitely would never have tried it otherwise. So I feel like it's a very safe dosage, and I support this. So I'm hoping Rockingham residents really think about, you know, the future of a, that we're not on an island and be, we're still looking for more retail and more business to come to town. And I would hate to have to send someone away because we decided this wasn't for us. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to Article Five? Scott, we got anybody at home that has their hand up? All right, moving on then to Article Six. Again, Article Five will be voted on tomorrow by Australian Mel. Article Six, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,354,252 $252 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town, beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, with $5,079,889 to be raised by taxes? Chairman Golick?
Yes, sir. Okay, Article Six. I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,354,252 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town, beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, with $5,079,889 to be raised by taxes. This budget results in the savings of a penny from last year. The tax rate this year, if this budget passes, will be 1.0783. Last year was 1.08. So we save a penny, and so we did save you some money this year.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Peter, is your motion? Do you wish to address it?
Certainly. As I mentioned earlier, there are several mistakes in this thing, but rather than burden you with previous-year mistakes, if you take your last year's town report and compare it with this year's, you will find some misprints. They don't affect this year's budget. But I have three articles here that do. On page 27, Meaning House article, $3,000 is shown in fiscal year '22. It should be in '23, which makes the total $30,750. And the total is correct. It does not affect the budget, just that there's a misprint. Also, on that page, you will notice in bold print, let me get to the page here. You will see that the bold print of 27,308,000, 41,000, 60,000, that's a misprint, because if you look back on recycle, you will see that that is a rager's line for the recycle that has no effect on this line on the white that in there. That's another misprint situation. Also, on the recycle, on page 28, Minor Item Electronics Recycling, the budget is adopted with $600 and not 500. So that's a misprint. Total is correct. So it's just a misprint. Page 30. The article we'll be voting on in a few minutes is the Services article. The Services article is printed, and the amount printed per applicator is correct. But if you look at this total on page 30, you will see that Greater Falls Connections is set up to receive $1,500. And that is incorrect, because that's the amounts for Senior Solutions. And the amount for Greater Falls Connections is not shown here, and they're in there for 4,000. So that's another mistake. But the total of 94,603 is correct. So that's not an issue. I think I got one more. This was in the library on page 43. Page 43, yeah, I can get the right page. Page 43. If you look at the salaries, their budget was, the director was, the salary's full-time was 91,000. It shows 89,000 here. Their budget is, the total is correct. But once again, something is messed up there. The same with salaries part-time. This was the wrong information posted there in print. It should be 79,000. The rest of them I have here are just previous years that the totals do not match up with our 2021 report. So if you look at 21 report, and get down through it and compare the numbers, you'll see where the misprints are. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Finance Office experienced some over expenditure. As you know, there must have been a problem with the water. The school had a finance issue. We've had finance issues. We have finally, I think we're at the end of our issues, where the school's just beginning their problems. We had to retain the previous finance manager for about three months as a consultant to help the auditors understand some of the issues, or she understands some of the issues. Also, she was a human resource officer, and there were some legal issues that she had to consult on because she had her finger in the mix. So you'll see that recycle expenses, this year, we hope we're going to hit a breakeven mark or pretty close to it with our increases in the prices we had. So we have seven employees down there. Unfortunately, you will see that there is a large increase from, I think, 60,000 to 96,000 for salaries. We're open three days a week down there now. Unfortunately, we can't get anybody to volunteer their time down there, which would cut the salaries. We've discussed that at the board level, but they just don't show up except myself. But anyway, that being said, you'll notice also the debt service line is decreased by about 300, 350,000, if I'm adding up correctly. Part of that is a Brockway Mills road project that was complete this year, so that we'll be making the final payment. And the money that we're saving from that, we're gonna, as I mentioned in the Select Board report, we'll be putting into the paving item. Board report, we'll be putting into the paving item, which is going to be, we normally put in 450, so the 450,000 to 220,000 for the amount of the loan and interest will be added to that. So it'll end up being a paving item this year for $770,000. And with our price increases we expected, we expect to hit maybe 887,000. Hopefully, we won't get there, but as you know, oil, gas prices are going up. Every day you turn around, there's a new one posted on your signs. So hopefully, we won't be able to spend all that much money, because there is always savings. The cinema was funded by a grant from the Shuttered Venues Grant in the amount of 144,000 for 2021. This year going forward, Gary has obtained for us another Shuttered Venues Grant in the amount of 72,000. So that will be applied. Unfortunately, with the COVID and other issues going on, and the streaming that you can get at home, not, our attendance at the movies have been pretty poor, probably about 50% what it normally is. Live shows, I think we've had three of them, and they've been more productive in attendance than the movies. So hopefully, that will pick up. If not, we've got a decision to make coming forward in 2023. So I think that about covers that. And like I say, the audit is out there, so it's too late to put it in the report, but those three pages I told you about will give you the information on 2021 expenditures versus revenues.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion or questions or comments on Article Six? Scott, anybody at home? Oh, David, just now. Mr. Lambert.
Just a quick question, Peter. The 1.3 million that is not being raised by taxes, where does that come from? Between your overall budget and the amount to be raised by taxes, there's a difference of 1.3 million. Where does that come from?
All right, we're using, we used $200,000 of previous fund balance to reduce that, the amount of the thing, that part of it. The other is coming from grants and applications and highway funding for paving, et cetera. Whether we get it or not, we don't know, but we're estimating we will be. The cycle comes on every three years, and we're, hopefully, if nobody else applies, we will get it. So there is various sources that those are coming from. Scott, might be have a better idea of, between infrastructure and APFA funds, we can never figure out what we can qualify for. We should, we got some money from there, so.
Yeah, you also get some monies from, you know, charges for services, so other ways that we raise revenues, and we also have some modest amount of money that we get for things like rents of storefronts and leases from some of the land that we've leased for the solar farms, some other items. So there's other sort of miscellaneous sources that kick into that as well.
Any further comments or discussions on Article Six? Article Seven, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $94,103 to be allocated to the following social service agencies as indicated. Bellows Falls Community Bike Project, $5,000. Bellows Falls Senior Center, $21,384. Greater Falls Connections, $4,000. Greater Falls Justice Center, $3,000. Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center, $500. Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, Inc., $2,700. Meeting Waters YMCA, $5,000. Our Place, $5,000. Parks Place, $4,000. Senior Solutions, $1,500. Southeast Vermont Community Action, SEVCA, $4,770. Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., The Current, $3,825. Springfield Supported Housing Program, $2,500. Vermont Adult Learning, $1,350. Vermont, I'm sorry, Visiting Nurse Alliance of Vermont, New Hampshire, $26,024. Women's Freedom Center, $1,750. Youth Services, $2,300. Mr. Zimmer.
I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $94,103 to be allocated to the following social service agencies as indicated. Shall I read the?
I think we need to play actual motion, yes.
Bellows Falls Community Bike Project, $5,000. Bellows Falls Senior Center, $21,384. Greater Falls Connections, $4,000. Greater Falls Justice Center, $3,000. Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center, $500. Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, Inc., $2,700. Meeting Waters YMCA, $5,000. Our Place, $5,000. Parks Place, $4,000. Senior Solutions, $1,500. Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEVCA, $4,770. Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., The Current, $3,825. Springfield Supported Housing Program, $2,500. Vermont Adult Learning, $1,350. Visiting Nurse Alliance of Vermont, New Hampshire, $26,024. Women's Freedom Center, $1,750. Youth Services, $2,300.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you. Before we have enough, Elijah, I'm going to come back to you. I just noted that there's a typo in the first paragraph. The printed amount is 94,103. The typed numerical amount is 94,603. I don't know which is correct.
It is 603, sir. As I say, things got a little screwy when this thing went in, so bear with us.
Mm-hmm.
Point of order. Listed in the town report under Bellows Falls Senior Center. Is the order?
So this is a point of order for clarification. I'm looking online at the sample ballot that's listed. I'm assuming that sample ballot is accurate as for what we're going to be voting on tomorrow. It lists Bellows Falls Community Bike Project with some amount of $21,384, whereas the warrant in our thing lists that as the Bellows Falls Senior Center value. And the letter from Bonnie Anderson lists $5,000 as requested. So I'm looking for a point of order for clarification. What is accurate and what is legally binding as we go to the polls tomorrow to vote?
Kathleen, we can't hear you without a mic. Oh, oh, okay.
I have an opinion, but I'm just a moderator.
As I say, the article in the town report, Article Seven, is printed correctly. The Select Board does not have anything to do with the ballot printing. That's on the town clerk. So the answer would have to come from that, and as far as legality of how that, which, if it's valid or not, is a good question. I don't think, yeah, I'm not a lawyer.
As voters voting on it, I think the clarification is very important because either someone's going to get more than what they're asking for, or someone's not going to get what they need.
I would entertain an opinion, sir. I'm not going to hold you to it, but I would open opinion as stated. The amount, the amount we're asking for, 94,603, I would imagine that the printed article on the warning, even though it's wrong on the ballot, would be the deciding factor. I'm just throwing that out. I don't know where you stand, Ray, but that way.
I'm like Switzerland. I'm neutral tonight.
The, I would assume we would, we would go by the amounts that are printed on Article Seven in the town report, and they, that would, that is correct, the amount of money they would be getting is.
Valid and valid.
That's a question for either Secretary of State or the town clerk. I can't help you there.
Why would we have to ask Secretary of State?
Mr. Hardy.
Dennis Hardy. A couple of things about this article one, but pursuant to what we're talking about now, the voters are just going to vote on the total sum, $9,603, correct? I think that, I think the selectmen could allocate the money anyplace they wanted, actually, like they can in other budgets. Other budgets, you can move money around. But that would be up for the Secretary of States. But my question is, why is this on the ballot this year if we voted on it last year? Because?
Because some of the articles, some of the numbers changed, Dennis. I know the Women's Freedom Center, it went up $625 on request, so that had to go back in there.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons. Some of the numbers changed. Some of them are, were the same as last year. They didn't change. I know the Senior Center and the nursing has always been that amount for the last four or five years that I can remember.
Right. So we always skip a couple of years and put it in the main budget.
Yeah.
When we did that. There's another.
If you remember before, we used to take, we used to vote every single one of these. There was like 30 items on the ballot that we used to vote individually. This way, we can just list them, and you're asking to vote for the total amount of money.
But if this article is turned down because 10 voters don't like the bike project, but they go along with everything else, and 10 voters don't like Meeting Waters YMCA, but they would go along with others. So if those, say, like 40 voters vote it now, then everybody gets hurt here. Nobody gets any money.
That's, that's the problem with Australian ballot voting.
Yeah.
You either vote it up or you vote it down.
So we should think about how we, we should think about if we pass Article 13, which I recommend we don't.
We can, we can discuss that when we get to.
We should vote on the, on the floor, but otherwise, we should change this or something.
Recognize the town clerk, Kathleen Niedock.
So Danny, you are correct. Any, if there's any change to any of the allocations, that needs to be put on the ballot. But the ones that are staying the same should not be on there. We should only do those every five years. But if somebody's making a change to the amount they want, that needs to be a separate item, a separate article on the ballot. So you are correct, these didn't need to all be on there.
Is there any other discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article.
Can I speak? It's Joanne from Senior Solutions.
Yes, Joanne.
First, I want to thank everybody for supporting us for the last few years, and we are keeping the same ask this year. But more importantly, I just want to invite everybody to visit our website so that you can find out about all the services we provide to people because of our goal of promoting the well-being and dignity of older adults. And invite everybody to listen to W O O L F M, 91.5, right here in Bellows Falls, every Tuesday night from 5 to 6. Unfortunately, you have to listen to me talk about all the benefits and programs we're offering and the new programs that will be coming very soon for people over 60. That's all. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article Seven?
If you were to make an amendment to the ballot at this point, could we correct the error that's in the warning in the ballot system? No?
No, no. We're stuck with it as printed. I'm going to hazard a guess that there may be some maneuverings after town meeting to set things right without specifying what I think those might be. So tomorrow may not be the final say. Moving on to Article Eight, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $431,555 to fund the operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library? $379,250 to be raised by taxes. Ms. North?
I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $431,555 to fund the operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library. Of that, $379,250 are expected to be raised by taxes, to be voted upon tomorrow by Australian ballot.
Do we have a second? Bonnie, do you wish to address the motion?
I would simply like to say that I hope this is passed.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on Article Eight? Scott, anybody at home? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Knowing there's, knowing that there's still more to come, I'm not going to take long. I just would agree with Bonnie. So I'm Ian Graham. I don't live in town, but I appreciate being recognized. I'm the library director, and I have been since November 1st. So it's nice to see some familiar faces here. I haven't been here that long, and I don't get out of the building very much, but I allow you to come into the building, so I really appreciate that. And I just would encourage everybody to continue to support the library, and I want to thank the Select Board, the town offices, and the library board for all working together to come up with a budget that is the same as last year, and despite increases in costs and stuff, funds the exact same program. And it was a lot of really good effort on the part of Scott and Alyssa and the Select Board themselves, and then the library board to work together to make that happen. I thought it was a really fun way for me to come to town and get to meet people and see everyone work really nicely together. And so I agree with Bonnie. We should all support this tomorrow. It would be very good for the library and for the town. So, and I'm happy answering any questions.
Well, Ian, welcome to town. Any other comments or discussion under Article Eight? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article Nine. Yes?
Could I just ask a quick question to town clerk?
Which article?
I'm sorry, Article Seven. I just wanted to ask if it's possible to make a photocopy of this correct listing and have that attached to the ballot for tomorrow? No?
No.
We can't have that as an addendum or physical?
Ballot have to be fed to a machine.
It's not hand. Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry.
No, it's quite all right. Article Nine, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to fund the town portion of purchasing the Bellows Falls train station for the purposes of future preservation by utilizing existing grant funding opportunities? Ms. Hammond?
Yes, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to fund the town portion of purchasing the Bellows Falls train station for the purposes of future preservation by utilizing existing grant funding opportunities.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Sue, do you wish to address the motion?
I'm not even sure I can.
All right, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
Gary, most of us know who you are, but.
Yeah, so I am presenting as the Development Director for the town of Rockingham, although I do live in Bellows Falls here. I do live in Bellas Falls here. So we have a historic opportunity with the train station right now. Many folks probably remember Senator Leahy providing some earmarks in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, and five, and for this purpose. And we were not able to use those because federal money is not able to be granted to private industry, and a private railroad owns the station. Now that the November fifteenth, federal Congress passed a one-point-two-trillion-dollar infrastructure bill, and five hundred and fifty billion of that is for new projects, and the state of Vermont is applying for projects in their five-year rail plan, which include four passenger station improvements, which Bellas Falls is one of them. There's also, the five-year rail plan has adding another round trip of the Amtrak train, continuing it on to Montreal. And in addition, there's a demonstration plane, train from New Haven to Greenfield, Mass. that met its numbers. And so it is now in the plan to extend that to White River Junction. So over the next five to ten years, our one round trip per day will turn to three round trips per day. The, a couple other things about the rail plan. They are supporting projects that have transit-oriented, that are adjacent to transit-oriented development. And the town is in the process of an area-wide plan that provides transit-oriented development throughout the island area, which for folks who don't know, are downtown. It's one of Vermont's, I think there's twenty-two designated downtowns. And half of our designated downtown, or a portion of it, maybe a third, is that island area, which is underdeveloped. There are, I think we have something like twenty-two active businesses on the island. So sometimes we think of it as an area that nothing's happening on. And there is a lot there, but there's also a lot of undeveloped and unutilized and underutilized properties. And I think there's, right now, there's plans for thirty million dollars investment between the Depot Street Bridge, the Vilas Bridge, the train station. And so it is, it's a historic opportunity, and our quarter of a million dollars this July leverages those funds. That's our town investment. What we're asking for in the vote is seventy-five thousand dollars. There are some Downtown Transportation Fund grant for two hundred thousand dollars, which we have worked with the state on this and are very competitive for it. And so on the article, seventy-five thousand dollars adds a penny and a half to your taxes, but it leverages a lot. I would just say the train station itself, historic nineteen-twenty-one building, we are in the process of a feasibility study that you folks authorized a town meeting two years ago. And these architectural drawings and the budget are from midway into that feasibility study. Let's see, these, it is a contributing structure on the National Register, and these two drawings of the exterior show there, the nineteen, when it was constructed in nineteen-twenty-one, these elevations, this is the accurate representation that it will be restored to. And, and a lot of that is required as a contributing structure on the National Register. Let's see. Part of, part of the idea for the plan and why we've chosen this, there have been feasibility studies going back to two thousand and two through two thousand and five that showed the amount of station that, that has to be programmed into rail to be able to provide capacity for the passenger trains, and how much of the station could be programmed for other tasks, other uses, rather. And there's also in two thousand and nine were studies on uses, and they looked at opportunities like you would see in other transportation centers, like an airport, or, you know, a Hartford or a New York station where you have retail kiosks and travel amenities, and could the station be supported with that? And those just, they just didn't provide the cash flow that would operate the station. Our goal is to have a use that operates and maintains the station so that the passenger station, the Amtrak service and Greyhound service does not burden the taxpayers of their town at all. It's covered by the rents received from Amtrak and Greyhound, and the operating and maintenance for the whole building, which is extensive, is by private, private industry. So the, the examples in the drawing are a nano brewery that just provides enough craft beer for a restaurant in the same site. And some of the reasons it's been shown in these intermodal stations that restaurants are successful, Vermont does have a cachet with the craft beers. And so this is a model that works financially. And if anyone's interested, I'm happy to, after the meeting, answer any specific questions on pieces here. It is a high price tag. It's four million dollars for the renovation. And a lot of the reasons that our historic structures don't get renovated, and why we do have to demolish them, is because they're so expensive to maintain. And what's different, so what's different here from Robertson Paper Mill, a sixty-six Atkinson, the Methodist Meeting House, is that as a, as a public facility, there are federal funds available for the exorbitant costs of renovating, of maintaining our history. So I guess I would, I don't think I have anything else to add other than answering questions.
Thank you, Gary. Does anybody ever have any other comments or questions or discussion?
Yeah, can I just pipe up?
Yes.
Hi, it's Joanne again. I'm sorry to butt in, but this is so exciting. Currently, and I've been for quite a long time on the Governor's Rail Advisory Council here in Vermont, this is the kind of project that we love to see. The combination of the public and private funds investing in the future of our towns, the FRA, the state, and local businesses working together. This is such a win-win-win project. I would hope that the people in Bellows Falls will look seriously at this possibility. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Anybody else wish to comment on Article nine?
Yeah, Ray. Jamie Burke.
Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, so understanding Gary just said that there's proposed thirty million dollars going around the small investment that we would have to make. How many, how much of that thirty million is signed for Vilas Bridge and the other bridge? I know it's all in concept in the hopes of getting the funding, but out of that thirty million, how much is approved moving forward before we go in for grants for the railroad station?
Gary, can you address that?
So there's seventeen million dollars for the Vilas Bridge, and that is not yet approved by New Hampshire. That's proposed. And the Depot Street Bridge is, I believe it's around eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars, which is approved.
Okay. And, and, and again, I did watch the proposal. I think it's a great opportunity for the town and the village to see growth in, in the renovation of this. But also, we still have environmental concerns that haven't been addressed, some best guess prices on this. So what's the plus minus of that four million dollars of not known costs right now?
The environmental study and hazardous materials assessment is nearly complete. The estimates for that cleanup on the station are around fifty thousand dollars. There is no, what's the word? There's, there's no ground disturbance in, in the project. So opening up the rail yard and working with any contaminated soils is not, is not any part of this project. And that, that's all state of Vermont property and will remain that way.
Okay. And just the only unknown is the extent of asbestos abatement and everything else. So right now, what we're voting on is the seventy-five thousand dollar initial?
That's correct. And we are working with the Wyndham Regional Commission as we speak on the asbestos cleanup. And there's some work that will be completed this summer, the asbestos cleanup, and some brick work, some exterior work that will stabilize the foundation and pieces that can be done independently of the, of the station renovation on the interior, HVAC systems, electrical, all of those pieces. So that, so just the asbestos cleanup, hazardous materials cleanup, brick work and foundation will be part of the work this, that's, that's quick. It's this summer.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or discussion on Article nine? Bonnie? Bonnie?
I would just like to emphasize the importance that this has for the future of our town. And I'd also like to clarify that I think these plans for a restaurant and a brew pub are absolutely beautiful. I think these guys did a lovely job on that. That is not decided. That's presented as the, a visualization of the kind of thing that we could do that would work and that would bring in enough income through the lease of the property to help maintain the property. And I think it's very important for the overall future. We're investing a lot of money in a new, new bridge over to the island area. We want to do something with that island area, and this would be a wonderful, wonderful stepping stone towards bringing that area back into economic productivity. Thank you.
Bill Morris?
Yes, good evening. My only concern is that today, there is no private commitment of funding for this project, correct? There's no, there is no commitment of private funding for this renovation project. Right now, we're dealing with town money for part of the purchase. I don't know what the entire purchase price is, but whatever. So we're committing seventy-five thousand dollars. I would feel more comfortable if the planning department or if the Board of Selectmen came to the town with a private commitment to what you visualize here. And I think it would be great to have two or three usage for the station, bring the station up to code, not lose its financial character, nor the men's room. Yeah, that was a joke. If you've ever been in the men's room, I actually should be in the Smithsonian. But that's very unique. It's worth a visit before it gets changed. But I would feel more comfortable supporting this project if we already had lined up a financial partner from the private sector. Thank you.
So there is a private partner that's interested, that's lined up, and it's, it's likely that we would have an RFP just so that other ideas and opportunities could be brought forth from other private entities. But the, the proposal, the, the company has not gone public with their interest yet, but it is an organization that's appropriate and with a solid and long history in this type of industry, I guess.
Would we get a commitment in six months?
Yes.
We vote on a full package in six months then?
Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article nine? Peter?
Yeah, I hope I'm speaking for the board here, but this board is behind this project. We, like you, have all concerns. What happens if it doesn't pan out? We've, town will own a building that we'll have to maintain. We've got buildings now that we can't maintain. Why do we want to own another one? That's a question that's been thrown at us. I don't think that should inhibit people from, to not vote for this project. The other thing is unfortunate part for the Select Board, we did not get the benefit of the presentation the village got on the twenty-second. I would suggest that you have the chance, go on Fact TV and punch up that video and watch that, because there is some novel information on that in regards to the maintenance of that building if this project goes forward. It's a novel. I've never even heard of it myself, but where it's, they told us that you, when you do the lease, you can reduce the amount of lease you want to lease it, but then the lessor is going to be responsible for anything that happens to be done. If they need plumbing fixed, they need windows fixed, they need heating fixed, they are responsible for the maintenance of that building. So that relieves, will alleviate some of the issues of concern of maintenance of that building on the town end of it. So I encourage everybody to look at that. It's probably going to be too late. But to answer to Mr. Morris's question, the reason we have to vote on it now is that there's, the application date is March seventh for this money. So if it doesn't, if we don't vote now, we, we can't vote. The next vote comes down around, I think it was, it was November to Gary or something, the second chance we get to put this through, if we can do it.
So the, the grant that we're applying for that would do the purchase in July along with, with our seventy-five thousand dollars as, as taxpayers is once a year. So that would be next year. What's happening in November that we need to be on board with well before that is when the state is applying to the, the federal government for their infrastructure, rail infrastructure grants. And so if we don't own it, they don't consider us shovel-ready. And they went, they invested a lot of time and energy earmark fifteen years ago and were burned because a nonprofit or the transit agency or the town would not purchase the building. And so that got swept away. And there's, there's no way that they're going to support doing that again until the town has shown the commitment and owns the building. So that's, that's why we really need to do this now.
Any further discussion or comments on Article nine?
Hi, Betsy Thurston. I just want to mention one thing. The Downtown Transportation Fund and all the other grants, state, federal, they really need to see support, matching funds. So this kind of support, it's the seventy-five thousand dollars would show all of the grant funding that we're applying for, that we're, we're in it with them as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Ray, just one last thing. I, I, I agree with Peter that it was a good presentation, definitely worth watching. However, this all hinges on the fact of having a solid leasing that would be willing to pick up those maintenance costs. And in no way am I against the progress of moving this project forward. There's just some unknowns that I don't think have been fully explained. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Bonnie?
And I, I understand, um, the previous speaker's concerns about there not being someone ready to sign on the dotted line, but, uh, I guess this is addressed to Jer- uh, to Gary. How could we even solicit a commitment when we don't even own the property?
Gary, do you need to respond?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a rhetorical question.
I mean, it would be nice. It would be nice if we did have someone standing there, uh, ready, uh, checkbook in hand to put a deposit down, but we can't expect such a thing when we don't even own it. We have no right to even talk about leasing it when we don't own it. Thank you.
All right. I think we have explored the issue to the extent we can tonight, um, and I'm going to move on to Article ten. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to purchase a truck and plow for the primary purpose of snow and ice removal? Peter, this looks like it's one of your favorites.
I moved to, to the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase a truck and plow for the primary, primary purpose of snow and ice removal.
I have a second. Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, we, uh, we, we could have gone the usual route, uh, of gone out and taken a loan on this truck. But any of you out there know, if you're going to try and buy a car nowadays, you're going to be lucky to find what you're looking for because of the chip shortages. We have to order this truck now, uh, and we may expect to get it in a year and a half. Larger equipment is now two or two, two to two and a half years out. So if you're looking to buy a, a loader or a backhoe, it's going to take you that long to get one. So you have to plan ahead. Scott can probably go a little bit more detail than, than he knows the situation a little bit better than I do, but that's the gist of it.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'll add to, to what Peter had mentioned is we do have an equipment replacement schedule, so this is not something that's extraordinary or we're asking you to fund a vehicle that would add to our fleet. This is part of our, our normal, uh, cycle of replacement. I think the issue, as Peter's pointed out, is we've run into this supply chain concern. And this, in order to make sure that we have equipment that's reliable and it's not going to break down in the middle of storms and create hazardous conditions when we're trying to do snow and ice removal, um, the board felt that this was a way that we could make sure that we were ordering these with these long lead times, that we already had the approval so that we could go forward and place these orders.
I, I will like add that this will, uh, put three cents on the tax, uh, rolls that this is passed. Uh, if, if it fails, I'm, probably we could find some other way to, to get this taken care of, but we decided to let the voters get, have the decision to, to, to take and pay that an extra taxes. So I'll leave it at that.
Bonnie?
I would also like to point out, uh, at this time, that, uh, the global economic situation is rather perilous. There are anticipations that supply chains will be impacted. And the problem, uh, reason we're asking for this money now is so we can buy this truck and hope to get this truck before a couple more winters pass. We're also looking at receiving funds within the next few months that we couldn't state that we had in the budget we're presenting to you now, right? But those funds can help to ease the burden going forward. And if we can come up with the money now to get this truck ordered and on the way, we'll be in much better shape in a couple winters when what we, could that we have might not be workable. Thank you.
Yes.
Are the, Carol Blackwood from Rockingham, are the manufacturers requiring that we pay the entire sum of the truck upfront out of this year's money or would it be a deposit and we would pay the residual upon delivery at perhaps a future year's budget?
Most of this, have it, most of these, uh, large items that we purchase like this, we only put down a minimal amount when we, uh, secure the order and then it's paid on balance when the actual equipment's delivered. I, I think the issue there is from a, uh, financial and auditing standpoint, I can't order something that's not appropriated by either the taxpayers or the board. So I have to have an appropriation in order to place that order.
But if, if we're not, um, spending it until perhaps two or three years down the road, then would that funds just not come out of this year's spending and get rolled over?
There'll be a reserve established and that money will, will be, right, reserved for the specific purpose if it's authorized by the voters, absolutely.
Any other questions on Article ten?
So Ray, Jamie, Eric, so just, just one more thing on, on the purchase. Have, have we revisited and looked at, um, four or five-year leases on equipment and, and the costs associated with that? For trading?
We have done, um, recently we have tried a used vehicle. We're in our second year with that. We'll see as we're looking at maintenance and operating costs as we go forward. The problem is you only get one year's worth of additional warranty when you purchase it and on those types of vehicles. So right now we're out of warranty. So any other, the major repairs, breakdowns, other types of problems that might occur are all on our operating budget in order to keep this, uh, rolling stock working. So we're evaluating that to see if that's cost effective. Right now we, like I said, we just came out of warranty, so we really have probably another year or two to see if in fact that makes some sense going forward.
You, you're, you're talking that you, a leased vehicle just came off warranty?
Right. There's like, there's a limited amount of these types of vehicles that are available, so you have to put your name in as part of a group that basically there's a limited supply. So the vendors that sell you the used or the new trucks also have some dealings with the returns in the used vehicles. So there's a whole process involved in how you can get involved in that and then ultimately match up with, with our needs. But most of that warranty's already been utilized by the time we get the truck.
Scott, that's, that's, that's not my question. I'm, I'm talking a new leased vehicle for, for the town and the village, uh, for a five-year lease and then trading it back in and every five years we get a new vehicle. I actually work, uh, with a hundred and eighty-seven pieces of equipment and we found it more cost-effective to lease for five years, whether it be a forklift, um, a crane, uh, a truck. So I'm just looking at a new lease option for vehicles and every five years we get the value of what we turn in and we get a new vehicle every five years. But just something to look forward in the future.
Absolutely. We'll take a look at that, Jim.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article ten? Moving on to Article eleven, we're in the home stretch. This is the last money article. Article eleven. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with twenty-two thousand dollars to be raised by taxes? Rick? Looks like you're going to read that one. Did you know that?
Do so. The, uh, article number, uh,
eleven.
Shall the voters, I moved that the voters of, of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with twenty-two thousand dollars to be raised by taxes.
You got a second? Thank you, Peter. Uh, Rick, uh, do you want to explain the background or history of this?
Our historic preservation, um, team has worked very hard to keep the, the meeting house, um, from decaying. It's a historical treasure. We're so fortunate to have a meeting house that has not been, uh, remodeled as so many have, so many of them have been over the years. So, um, we of the select board, I think I'm speaking for the board, support this action and, and, um, I don't know what else to say. Yeah. Let's do it.
Any questions or discussions about Article eleven?
Only, well, item I would make is there again, it's a money issue. Uh, it's another half a cent on the tax rate, just so, not to discourage people from voting, but everybody likes to watch the pennies, so.
Further comments or discussion on Article eleven? Moving on to Article twelve. Article twelve, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham adopt the budget of the Rockingham Free Public Library by Australian ballot commencing with the twenty-twenty-three Town of Rockingham Annual Meeting? Mr. Zimmer?
That the voters of the town of Rockingham adopt the budget of the Rockingham Free Public Library by Australian ballot commencing with the twenty-twenty-three Town of Rockingham Annual Meeting.
I have a second. Thank you, Peter. Is there any discussion? Yes. Steve?
Yeah, uh, Steve Croft here. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Mottredger, if there's a town official, either the select board or the town manager that could, um, just speak to, uh, to kind of clarify the confusion there's been over, um, the legality of voting, um, to, for making a change in the future to Australian ballot, uh, by a vote, uh, using Australian ballot as a voting method to make that. I know it's not legal under state statute, except, um, that the legislature passed, uh, temporary provision to allow it last year and this year, but those, um, temporary bills specified that it was for these two years only. And, um, so I, I'm not questioning the, the, uh, the change to Australian ballot. I'm questioning that our legality of us trying to do it, um, in a future year. I understand we can do it this year, but I don't think we can do it in twenty-twenty-three unless next year the legislature passes another temporary bill. So I don't know if anyone can explain that or speak to that.
Anybody on the board wish to? So this legal issue has been kicking around for months now. I don't want to step too far outside the body reader's role, but the legislature has made some extraordinary provisions, uh, to account for COVID both last year and this year. Like a lot of legislative bodies, they could have been more precise in their language. We, in terms of voting, um, it is on the ballot as stated. We will vote on that tomorrow by, by Australian ballot, um, as to whether or not we're going to do that going forward. Whether or not there's a challenge to that in the future, uh, who knows? There's also the possibility of having a special meeting to adopt that for next year. There's a possibility that it could be brought up again next year at a floor vote. So there are a number of curative, um, options to do this, but as far as tonight's reading and tomorrow's vote, it's strictly applying to what we're doing on this particular ballot. So I know, Steve, you and I have had that discussion.
Right.
In the past.
Right.
So, and I don't, I don't know if you're going to get, you're certainly not going to get a clear-cut answer tonight. We've got, if you ask, you know, if you ask ten lawyers a question, you're going to get ten opinions.
Right.
If you ask the Secretary of State's office, depends on who you talk to.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. And I think my purpose in just bringing it up is that, um, from looking at it from my talking with the Secretary of State's office, it looks to me like it's not legal for us to do this and it could be wrong. There was an article in the Reformer, I think on February twentieth, that was very confusing and it, and it, I'm not sure if this was a misquote or if it was an accurate quote of the town's attorney stating that Australian ballot, uh, change to Australian ballot could only be made by Australian ballot. And that's clearly not true according to the state statutes, but, um, so anyway, I'm not sure what the art, I'm not sure if the article was, like I said, I don't know if it was a misquote or, or the town attorney really said that. But anyway, I'm just concerned that, um, that we do things that will hold up and, you know, in the future. So anyway, thank you.
Peter?
Uh, I, I don't want to start a confusing issue here, but this, uh, this problem, uh, was brought up by Steve, uh, maybe the first meeting of February in the process of adopting a warning, uh, and our budget. When Steve approached us with that, we went to our town attorney and he said exactly what Steve said, you can, you're good, go ahead and do it. We did it in twenty-twenty-one. But I went to the Secretary of State's office. It's confusing, as Ray said, and you ask ten people, you're going to get ten different answers. But Title seventeen, subchapter twenty-six eighty states, unless specifically required by statute, the provisions of the Australian ballot system shall not apply to the annual or special meeting of a municipality unless that municipality at the annual meeting or a special meeting called for that purpose boasts to have them apply. We've been a floor-voting town right up until twenty-twenty. Now, that's one problem. Second one, town, as I said, so I asked them, I said, the town of Rockingham, I always been, I always voted the floor, it's annual town meeting. I understand the above quote means that to move to the Australian ballot system, our town would have to vote from the floor at an annual meeting or a special meeting, one for that person. Am I correct? And his answer was yes. Second one, sub, uh, subset of chapter twenty, uh, seven, uh, Title seventeen, uh, uh, chapter twenty-six eighty also states that a municipality should not use the Australian ballot system at the same election at which the voters decide that the system shall be used. So I said, I understand that the town of Rockham could not vote by Australian ballot to use the system in the same year as it is asking the voters to approve the system. Correct? His answer is yes. Act one sixty-two was passed in twenty-twenty, was signed by the governor on ten, five, twenty. That allowed municipalities to use the Australian ballot system in the year twenty-twenty-one because of COVID, but only if the legislative body of Rockingham Select Board votes to do so. I went back in our minutes of the select board and find no motion or vote taken to do so for twenty-twenty-one. On an email that, um, Mr. Sunning, this came from Will Sunning, Secretary of State, he's in charge of elections, emailed to the town clerks, I repeat, clerk, on one nineteen twenty-two in regards to Senate Bill one seventy-two, also known as Act seventy-seven. That email stated municipality had two options. One is to use the Australian ballot system to vote its articles instead of an in-person floor vote for twenty-twenty-two and the other to move the date of the annual meeting this year to a date later in twenty-twenty-two. The legislative body of the municipality had to vote to use either option, correct? Yes. On February fifteenth at our select board meeting, this board voted to use the Australian ballot system for Articles two through thirteen for this year. In that, also in that, Miss Solti sent this, he had two bullet points. Bullet point number one deals with the information, informational meeting and the timeline, it has to be held ten days before, et cetera. Also, it stated that people do not have to have petitions again, that they did in twenty-twenty-one. If you want to run for office, you do not have to have a petition. Bullet point number two said that the warning may not contain any question on whether the municipality shall adopt the Australian ballot method of voting on a permanent basis or any or all articles for any subsequent municipal elections. And that says, I, I said, I understand that means that the only way to move to the Australian ballot system method has to be done at an in-person floor vote at an annual meeting or a special meeting one for that purpose, correct? Once again, yes. They added to Act that language specifically in Act seventy-seven because they screwed up, as Ray said, on Act one sixty-two in twenty-twenty-one, they didn't put that. But when I questioned Mr. Sunning further, he said that the intent, when they passed one sixty-two, the legislature intent and actual wording is two different. is two different items here now, that it would revert back to subsection 2680, that subsection 2E that says you can't use a Australian ballot to vote on the same year you're voting Australian ballot. So therein lies the confusion. The board, once that was discussed, we threw out the idea maybe after the dust settles after this election, town meeting and things that in April we call a special meeting and vote to go to Australian ballot for this year or 20, in 2023 and, and subsequent years. The other question I had, or the other concern I had was if you read the motion that was read, you're asking only to vote on the town budget. Now, there are three articles, money articles, asking for money from the taxpayers to fund. Those would have to be voted from the floor, according to the way I read this.
Peter?
I'm not a lawyer.
Peter, we're actually just talking about the library on this article.
Right.
But you're right. What you're talking about is the next article. But I'm going to give you the leeway to explain it. We'll save some time on the next article.
All right, that's fine. But there's another issue with the library, same, same issue. I talked to the library director myself and, and there's some clarification that may have to be word on that motion when we go, if we have another meeting down the line.
Any further discussion on Article 12? Hearing none, we'll move. Yes.
Hi.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, you called me. Thank you. Well, I, I hope that people will vote this down tomorrow because I think we do need to discuss it further. And I guess either way, there will be challenges if this is not a legal vote. But I would be, I would be sorry to see us give up voting the budget of the library in the town. So both these articles, 12 and 13, because I think that will basically end our town meetings because it will take away most of the reason for people to come to them. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Peter?
One follow-up question to that response was that the reason it was changed or attempted to be changed to Australian ballot was that we would get more voters out to vote on the issue. As you can see, there's probably maybe 50 or 60 people here tonight, whereas the vote on, on that issue in 2021 was 428 yes and 138 no to vote. So that was a reason for, for the, the only reason I can think of to go to Australian ballot. Mr. Lambert did bring up the, the situation that if we do that, we lose the ability to change any of the articles for money by going Australian ballot. Either vote it up or you vote it down. Then you have to have another whole election ballots, the whole expense that goes with that. So it's something to think about.
Any additional comments, discussion or questions on Article 12? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article 13. Article 13, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham adopt the budget of the town of Rockingham by Australian ballot, commencing with the 2023 Town of Rockingham Annual Meeting? Bonnie?
I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham adopt the budget of the town of Rockingham by Australian ballot, commencing with the 2023 Town of Rockingham Annual Meeting.
You have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Peter, thank you. And we will be voting on this by Australian ballot tomorrow?
Yes, thank you.
Any, having had our discussion on Article 12, any further discussion?
Am I now permitted to finish my dissertation from before?
Now you can.
All right, one, one final paragraph from Mr. Sunning. And it concerns Act 172 in the thing. He says that the language that was included in Act 77 to make clear that the provision you cited above in, in 2680E, the subchapter, is still enforced even if the town that typically votes on the floor decides to use the emergency authority and vote by Australian ballot during the pandemic. There was discussion that 2680E remains in effect if a town decides to use the emergency authority and vote by AB this year, but has decided to make that extra clear by including it in Act 77. There, I'm done.
Any further need to explore? Yes, Deb.
And that means that there'll be some consideration for the village because last year, not having the clarification you receive now, we already did that on the Australian ballot. So in 22, although this year is still pandemic year and it will still do it, in 2023, we're going to have some concerns. But understand, folks, that the boards made these decisions based upon the fact that we have 5,200 people in the village, in the town of Rockingham, and 3,200 people approximately, both in the village of Bellas Falls and, and then there's the, then there's the village of Saxons River. These choices are made because 100 people or fewer are making the decision of a budget of $6 million in the town of Rockingham respectively. And whatever the village is, turns out to be, because participation is lacking. And that is not the board's fault. It is, the board's result is to go to Australian ballot because they want more people to participate in elections and in voting on items of major concern that affect all of our tax dollars, no matter whether you can afford it or not. And that is the understanding. You have 50 people who come to a meeting, an annual meeting, and, and your whole budget is voted for the entire following year. That's a concern. And I don't want to lose town meeting either. Informational meetings can be effective, but it is possible that we could rework them and turn them into the 21st century version, which is to have an informational meeting a month before we go to print. And then we will all have the opportunity to change it on the floor before it goes to print, and then the entire community has the opportunity to vote on it. And I think we need to evolve the town meeting and involve the informational meeting and involve, involve and involve the Australian ballot. That's my thinking.
Thank you, Deb. Any other comments or questions on Article 13? Bonnie?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this is kind of a conundrum where we don't have participation. But to just go up or down on the entire budget is an equal, equally serious problem. I think the suggestion that Deborah just made that we have this informational meeting far ahead of the actual vote would be helpful. And I think all of us involved in government and management of the town and the village need to really think about what we can do to foster greater participation in any way, way that we can. So that's just my comment.
Any further comments on Article 13? All right, the last and final article of the evening is Article 13. Oh, yes, Jamie.
I, I'd just like to add in regards to Deb's comments, and I, and I agree. So I've been a resident for over 31 years in the town and village. And as many of you know, I try to participate as much as I can in person. However, working in Connecticut for the last three year, or eight years, Canada, three and a half, I'm not always able to attend, but I appreciate technology bringing me into the conversation, as well as I'm sure there's a lot of other people that, that can't make it out to these meetings. So it's very important to have participation and, and be able to weigh in on, on, you know, the future of our communities. So, you know, I, I really appreciate the technology evolving and we need to look at that as a village and, and town growing and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now we'll move on to the penumbra article, Article 14. To transact any other business deemed proper when not involving the expenditures of town funds or any other business enacted upon in the preceding article. Does anyone have any business to bring forward under Article 14? Mr. Fox?
So the, the, the three boards, the Village of Saxons River Board, the Bellas Falls Village Trustees and the Rockingham Select Board are all collecting projects that can be, that are, that's public input for the ARPA process. So the ARPA is money, but this, this item is not about money. It's about providing input for projects that can be anything, big or small. It's a, it's a very simple form, three, three sentences of a project description, some multiple choice in terms of what stage the project is in. So there is an online, there's a form, a simple Google form right on the town website. This tells you where to go, but basically you just go to the town website. The strip menu under municipal projects, there's a, a ARPA. It explains everything about ARPA and has a form. But also there are paper ones here. If you don't like forms on the website, that you can collect or ask any questions after the meeting. And we'll also have these out in front of the Masonic Lodge all tomorrow at polling day. March 2nd.
Any other, yes. Laurel?
I'm Laurel Green, Bellas Falls. I'm a member, member of your Conservation Commission and your Energy Committee. Great ways to be involved in your town and we need more people. So if you're interested in energy conservation or seeing more solar built, maybe on all the school buildings or having bike and pedestrian, I know that the town's been thinking about bike and ped stuff, but that's part of energy. Conservation Commission is looking at the nature chapter for the town plan currently. There's just lots of really interesting things to do. So if you have any inclination, please contact me or Peter Bergstrom or Mike Gia. Thank you.
Lauren? No, we have a better one for you.
No, I just wanted to quickly say that as Greater Falls Connections, we have printed some information about the retail cannabis vote, information about the current regulations. And so anyone's still undecided and wants more information, we have some on the table out there.
Ms. Hammond?
I just want to say before everyone leaves to thank Camilla Roberts for her years as a Lister. And Obie already left, so I wanted to thank him too, but he's already left. And also thanking her for sticking around as a consultant because we're going to need you.
Any other business? In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.